Good afternoon, everyone.
I like this.
We're meeting this afternoon in work session to discuss the superintendent's draft budget for fiscal year 2021. So, Dr. Michael, I'm going to turn things right over to you so that we can get started.
All right. Thank you, President Williams and members of the board. Today, we want to go through the draft superintendent's budget. We spent a great deal of time, most of the fall, looking at last year's budget, the current budget that we're in, trying to make some projections for what will happen this upcoming legislative session, looking at our current needs and looking at future needs as we review the budget process. What I'd like to start with is probably just the PowerPoint outlines the major parts of the budget and just kind of walk through that part, and then we'll certainly follow the will of the board. We could go through our summary pages, or we could go through the entire budget book, or both, however would be most beneficial to the board. So with that, I'd like to start with the PowerPoint. Staff will pull that up. So, you know, Eric and David are kind of our best guesses of what will happen with state revenue. Of course, this year with Kerwin, there's a lot of things up in the air, including a couple of things I haven't included in the PowerPoint. There is a $57 million number floating around from last year's blue, Maryland Blue Ribbon money. We're unclear if that money's going to be approved, if it was approved, if the funding's available. We did not include any of that in this. Our portion of that is about $1.7 million. It's mostly for post-CCR, so post-college and career readiness. It's for career and technology education, and there's a small amount in there for technology and teacher supplies, is how it was designed. I've asked to have that on the superintendent's meeting for Friday. So far, none of my colleagues have responded that they understand or know what it's for or if it's available either. But right now, we have not included in that, it would appear, if we get that money, it's going to be very targeted and very bucketed, for lack of another term. So, it doesn't appear it would provide additional money for us to use as we choose. It would be some very targeted things, and we have things in mind for it if indeed that money comes through. We do mention a little bit later in this presentation, we are assuming in this presentation that we will be funded our pre-K grant, which right now funds, I think, 11 teachers, 11 pre-K IAs, some supplies, some PD money, some other things. If that money doesn't come through, it's about $1.6 million. This budget would need to be altered to, we'd have to add $1.6 million or find another $1.6 million to accommodate that. So again, staff's best guess on the CPI coming up, about 1.2%. That would affect the foundation money, transportation money, our comp ed money. Basically goes across the whole formula. Of course, we're getting about $200 million from the state, so that could be a substantial amount of money at 1.2%. Factors that affect that would be our enrollment. We are up 38 official students in the K to 12 realm, and we have made some predictions, or staff have made some predictions, that the state would fund our pre-K expansion from last year to this year, 286 additional students, full-time students, at the same rate that they funded the students last year. The board recalls, last year, we kind of received a windfall when they started counting the pre-K or partially counted pre-K. So this budget assumes that they'll count these 286 students in the same manner as they did last year, additional students over last year's number. Some other factors that will affect our state revenue will be our EL, our English learner population is up by 57 students, so that's going to the factoring formula. Obviously, we need more resources to accommodate those students, but it does help us out financially with state support. One factor that's really difficult to predict is the farm rate. Our farm rate unfortunately went up from 47 to 47.8% this year. I guess selfishly, I want to hope that across the good economy, across Maryland, maybe in other districts, higher pay will affect them and their farm rate will go down. If their farm rate goes down and our farm rate goes up, we fare better in the formula. But it's very difficult to predict. Just because we went up, if the whole state went up, it might not equate to any additional money. If we have kind of a, you know, balancing act of that, or the state goes down overall and we go up, it'll favor us in the formula calculations. So again, a lot of best guessing and trying to figure out the state factor. As we look on the local side, the additional 38 students, the county will be required by law to do the maintenance of effort on those 38 students, the same amount that they provided last year minimally per student. Also, this budget reflects that we believe the county, again, will be identified as low-effort county, so the low-effort escalator will come into effect. We normally know that before the winter break, so we're anticipating finding that out. I don't think, staff, we don't have any positive information yet, but it almost always comes out this week or next week is when they identify that from the state. There's kind of three factors they look at when they identify the money. I think we've picked the 2.5% factor, so we'd anticipate about $2.5 million coming out of the low-effort identification if indeed the county's identified that way. So as we look at the revenues, we put an asterisk there. Again, we'll know a lot more, we assume, on January 17th. I think last year, we even knew a little bit sooner than that, the governor releases budget early, but we'll know a lot more on January 17th, at least what the governor's released. So we're estimating state funding, $4.2 million. Could be higher, could be lower. The county, the local, we're estimating 4.69, so that's assuming our 38 students, which isn't a lot of money. The 2.5% low-effort amount, and then about another $2 million in money that the county would have to fund above maintenance of effort to fund this budget, if all our other numbers are correct. We get more state money, and we don't make any changes to this budget. It could be less for the county. We get less state money to balance this budget. We require more money from the county. We have about a 10th of a million in there for increased revenues from other sources, and so obviously, the total increase of this budget reflects about a $9 million increase over last year's budget. So we divided the sections up into the five areas identified on this slide. So, what are the things that we've added already this year, and we've looked at, and we believe we need to continue them for next year? What do we see as needs for FY21 that are new? What are mandates, things that have increased due to inflation or new requirements? Compensation, I've included a number for compensation, including health benefits, and then savings from the FY20 budget. So as we look at the unanticipated health and safety needs this year, we've already added 1.4 clerical positions, the board's aware of that. We added a full-time person in HR to help us out with Health Bill 486. It's not enough help, but the full-time position and the addition of a .2 to a person that was already a .8, so we made them a full-time position. These folks are working on House Bill 486, the best that we can at this point. We also added 2/10ths of a clerical position to help cover the front desk. I do want to make it clear that we use a clerical position to cover the front desk. It's the cheapest way for us to cover the front desk. We do not have a resource officer there or anything like that, but we wanted to have consistency there, so we're trying to have the same person. Right now, we rotate people through there to cover extended hours, to cover lunch, to cover breaks for the full-time person, and what happens when you have 30, 40 people rotating through there, people come to the front door and suddenly they're getting different answers, different direction, and we just want to try to provide consistency with that. So we took a part-time position in benefits, and we've added 2/10ths to that. It's still a part-time position to help have consistency at that front desk. We have nine bus attendants that we've had to add this year for safety concerns and to help with managing the bus. We see a need to continue those next year, and three health care professionals. I asked staff if the needs of these three individuals that require full-time health or at least part-time health care professionals are going to continue. We don't see any of those students leaving Washington County for next year, so we've rolled them into the new budget. What we're experiencing growth right now is not across the board. Our elementaries continue to decline, unfortunately. They're declining in schools, but they're not declining enough for us to generate staff cuts or staff shifts to the middle school and high school. So there's still too many students to reduce the school staff member, but there's too many students in middle school particularly right now that we're going to have to address some of these high class sizes. So our high school, we'll see them go up in the coming years. You can see the trend line there at the bottom, that blue line is the middle school where we've jumped up the last couple of years. We anticipate middle school will continue to increase for a couple more years, then it'll flatten out unless we have in-migration, but that trend in middle school will shift to high school. So the majority of our additional positions for secondary will go to our middle schools. What I see happening, if we don't have in-migration, we will shift that from middle school to high school as the students shift to high school in the future. We won't, we will try to do that without additional teacher FTEs. So to manage some of that growth in the middle schools, we want to add two assistant principals, seven secondary teachers, six of which I think went up at middle school and one in high school, and then try to expand on our counselor social workers that we tried to, we expanded on last year. My original budget, we had more counselor social workers in here, but to balance this budget, I needed to cut it back to two. So we look at our English language learner population. I think we mentioned earlier, it went up 57 students this year when they took the official enrollment in October. I anticipate it will continue to increase throughout this year. We're requesting two additional English language learner teachers. I think this will be the third year in a row that we've expanded staff in that area. You can see, and my eyes won't read those small numbers, but I think it's from 2015, we've leaped up pretty consistently, and at this point, we're over 600 English language learner students. Students do great, staff's working with them. They're scattered all over the county, which is kind of a new piece for us in the last couple of years. A lot of our EL population was kind of concentrated to Hagerstown area, and now we have students in almost every school in the county. So we see a need to serve them in the schools that they're in the best that we can. As we look at the growth needs here in 2021, elementary, moving back and forth on how to manage particularly some student behavior challenges that we have. We've thought about a variety of things, and at this point, we're looking at expanding into our Title I schools, some special behavior support for every one of our Title I schools. If Title I students are out in other schools right now, they'll be pulled back into their Title I school to receive their services. That'll free up space for non-Title I school to help with behavior support. This is, to set these programs up, require staff member and a couple of IAs. We're trying to address K to 2 and 3 to 5. As we look at these various programs, it requires a counselor or social worker support, behavior specialists to be part of that. So this is a significant investment this year of almost $1.7 million. We're just seeing increased needs. Our needs are really with our very youngest learners, pre-K, K1 at this point, but we're not seeing those needs go down as the children get older. So I anticipate we're going to see this continue to grow for the next number of years, and we're going to try to address this in a therapeutic manner the best we can and try to curb this behavior before the students get any older. Also, we've allowed five contingency positions in the budgets. It's very difficult. We've had some wide swings, unexpected swings in some of our enrollment. No new housing development, no rhyme or reason for growth or declines in some of the areas. Really was different this year than many of the years we've worked with. Chad Chriswell does an excellent job in working, in working on our predictions, and we just had a couple of schools, we just, I mean, Old Forge, we have like 40 kids that just didn't show up the next year. They have always stayed at Old Forge and rolled up a grade, and just, they're gone. So some of those things, they move over to another school, and we have to address increased class size. And if the class sizes aren't small enough, or it's late in the year, it's difficult to cut and move teachers at the last minute in September. The three custodian positions that are listed up there to help with the square footage of the academic center next to Barbara Ingram, that's going to be square footage that we have been cleaning in the past, our contracts that we paid to the Grand Piano and to Bridge of Life Library, other places. They're currently cleaning those areas, so that square footage will need to be cleaned, and we're probably short-staffed at Barbara Ingram already. Also, with the expansion of Sharpsburg, we're picking up a substantial amount of additional square footage at Sharpsburg, and that, those areas will have to be cleaned. As we look at mandatory increases, our middle college expense, most of these are fairly minor, but they do end up collectively totaling about $1 million. But our middle college expenses are growing a little bit. Nursing services with Meredith, we've been able to absorb their salary increases over a number of years because they generally have an opening here or there, and much like we have turnover credit, they have turnover. We don't end up paying for services that aren't provided, but at this point, that's caught up with us, and we'll have to add additional money to nursing services. Volunteer background checks, you know, for Crowls, for FBI checks, those type of things, we have additional expenses. We've added a new line this year for employee disabilities accommodations. As we've had those things come up, this is like special chair, you know, for someone with back injury, sight issues. Sorry, my mind's going a little blank here all of a sudden, but as staff have accommodations, reasonable accommodations, they need to help teach for their own challenges that they might have. We're required by law to provide that, and we certainly want to provide that, but we've added a line to start tracking that as we've had increased costs there. Software and programs traditionally have an escalator in them from year to year to year. What we've done historically is we just continue to absorb these increases in the various programs, and we have to add them to the budget. To me, they're almost a mandate. If it's, you know, $100,000 this year, and 103, and 106, and 110, and 115, we got to have the software, so we've added those, those types of increases in here. Our phone and internet is up already this year, about $50,000, and we need to roll that into the new budget. Medical supplies, things like EpiPens, we originally were getting those for free. They have a shelf life, so we need to build those into the budget, and then some other contractual services. Some other needs, we have equity training. As we've all been looking and working on the equity policy, we started out with one figure for equity training, have reduced that now to about $100,000. It's divided between contractual services, some professional development money, and some supply money. Cybersecurity, the board's aware, we had the audit with our, the backbone of our technology services. We were able to add three positions last year. I think the auditors recommended adding five positions. Of course, we didn't have the resources to do that, but we've added three, but now we have our own cybersecurity person. They've identified some software that we're in need of to help protect the system. Classroom projectors and MacBooks, again, I've reduced this number from the original request that we had in our first draft of the budget, but we have a great many projectors. One of the challenges with technologies, you have it, you have to keep it updated and replace it as it wears out. And the large purchase of teacher MacBooks, a number of years ago, we're coming up on a replacement cycle of those devices as well. Compensation for employees, we have to address the minimum wage requirement. It affects a couple, the first blocks we have on maybe scale, step, scale one, grade one, whatever it's called, the first couple steps of that, and maybe the first step of grade two, so we need to address minimum wage requirements there. Then I've added money for salary resource pool as well as benefits, FICA, those types of things, as well as health insurance. Our healthcare fund right now seems like we're continuing to grow in our healthcare balance, which is a good thing. I think some of the MOUs, we've worked out with their various associations and the Meet Confer Group, are paying dividends and are reducing expenses or maintaining expenses. So I'm optimistic that we won't have to have a large healthcare increase this year, and possibly not a healthcare increase at all. We need to kind of, I'd like to wait until at least, till we close out the first half of the year here in December to see where we are at that point. Some savings from the FY20 budget, the largest portion of this is coming from turnover credit, but we have looked at Funkstown. We've been challenged by our Funkstown Early Childhood Center. It's been many things over the years. Most recently, it's accommodating the expansion of pre-K for Pangborn. Those students ride a bus to Pangborn, they get on a bus from Pangborn right over to Funkstown, so they start their day late, then they have to end their day early to ride the bus back over to Pangborn to board the buses there at Pangborn. I really see long-term that we want to have those children in Pangborn Elementary. They can benefit from the other pre-K programs. It begins teeming with pre-K and kindergarten, which we're finding to be extremely important in all of our other schools. Pangborn being a Title I school, I just see this as a necessity. We need to make a long-term plan that'll accommodate those students being in their building. We've looked at some hard space to try to add on. I think we're going to go with a temporary solution right now, portables. Obviously, the pre-K students will not be in the portables, and that's what will be in the portables if we have anybody in a portable. We got to be determined. Pangborn's enrollment fluctuates substantially. They have been as high as 800 and some, 808, something like that. They've been as low as close to 700. So we'll see what happens there. We have a couple of other programs there, specialized program for some very needy children with medical needs. That program is requesting additional nursing services beyond the full-time nurse or nurse aide that's there at Funkstown. I think those students might be better accommodated than another location. We have a gifted pre-K program there that could be in any school that has space. We have some ideas for that program, and those students come from all over the county, so those won't, those children, and obviously, everybody changes every year. The whole school is either a three-year-old or a four-year-old child there. And then we have a behavior class there that can, we have some ideas for that. So I think we have some good plans there that will better serve the students, is the most important part, but probably will save over $300,000 in staffing, not counting anything for utilities and things like mail delivery and incidentals and things like that for right now. And that's the PowerPoint presentation. At this point, we'd be glad to answer questions on the PowerPoints. We could go through the budget book page by page, we could go through the summary line by line. So at this time, we'd like to seek the pleasure of the board what they'd like to do next.
Thank you. Colleagues, would you like to ask questions? Yes?
At some point, yeah, I do. Oh, I can do it now, since I'm going to be leaving a little bit. Said that I have some concerns with Funkstown, and it's not from the letter that we received, it's not the fact that we're going to move people, move teachers. I do have an issue with the fact that we're going to mothball this place. You know, we're asking for two new schools in the, in the future at the elementary level, you know, the consolidation of four schools to two schools. I think, I got it on, I honest God, I turned it on. I think we hurt ourselves if we close the school and then say we need schools. I mean, there's just a perception, even though Funkstown's an older school, it's small, so on and so forth, there's still a perception, well, you know, you just shut down one, why do you need another one? So that was one concern that I had. I know we kind of turned our back on, the staff kind of turned their back on the idea of the Antietam Academy at the elementary level. I still think there might be merit to that. I know the law requires, you know, what is the least restrictive environment, you know? Okay, those, those children with real serious behavior problems, it might be better to have them in a, in a different atmosphere than a comprehensive elementary school, because not only do we have to worry about them having, being in a least restrictive environment, then all the rest of the kids that are being impacted by those students who are kicking, screaming, punching, whatever the case might be, that's not the least restrictive environment for them. So, you know, I think that, I mean, I look at Antietam, and I, you know, I've seen the successes there. It's not perfect by any stretch of the imagination, but, but what happens there is we're trying to get kids who have behavior issues or other issues and put them in a position that we can move them back. And I, you know, my mindset is that I think that utilizing, and I probably, staff will not agree with this, but utilizing Funkstown in that situation and having comprehensive work with them on their individual issues could be beneficial instead of harming them. So, I mean, that, that's kind of, that's what I was, I didn't, I apologize, I didn't put it in email, because I'm very leery about saying anything about a student or a teacher or whatever the case might be, or a group of teachers, putting that in email, you know, that's bitten us in the butt occasionally, but that's where I'm coming from, Boyd, you know, I'll, I'll support you, and I'll support the group, but I do have issues with that. I just wanted to bring that out.
Okay. I mean, we looked at, possibly looking at Funkstown being what I would call a therapeutic school. We've had some other colleagues have started down that trail, one in particular, I believe Charles County just started a school that they're calling a therapeutic school. I don't know if it even opened yet. I know they were probably into the year when I last talked to the superintendent, I think in October, they anticipated opening the school. So I'll probably try to get an update from Dr. Hill on Friday, see how that's going. We just don't have the resources in this budget to address what we need to address at the home school and open a therapeutic school this year. What I would hope for in the future, we might be able to do that. The other thing that staff really convinced me of, we really have several levels of students that are challenged by being in the classroom all day long, but we have a lot of students that with just a little break from the classroom can be successful in the classroom. So I hate to remove them from any role model or chance to be in a regular classroom most of the day for those students. What I fear is going to happen is over time, because of what we're seeing with these younger students and what I hear, you know, of challenges of some of the children that have been born at Meredith's and what's yet to come, I think this is going to continue to grow, and I think we'll reach a point, we'll have students that we will have to seek to offer therapeutic services in a different way, and possibly, that's how we would reopen Funkstown. Funkstown may well be needed for growth if we start growing again. Right now, we have declining enrollment in elementary. Our need for schools there is really the replacement of schools, particularly our open schools. They're just not a good educational setting, particularly a couple of them are a greater challenge than others, but that's really our goal of replacing schools right now.
I like, you know, therapeutic sounds good, that's a good word for it, because that's what it is, you know?
Well, my, my goal would be to load that up with psychologist services and additional, you know, not only just one social worker, but additional people that would be, you know, we might become our own, you know, providing health services there as well. I don't know if you want to call on people, or you want me to call people presently?
Just along those lines, and thinking about what Mr. Reddner said about the need for a therapeutic school at the elementary level. I know at one time, and we probably still do this, but I don't know that we do it to as large a degree as we have in the past. There are students that we feel that we cannot provide the kinds of services that they need, and they go elsewhere for those kinds of services. So I'm wondering, do we have that kind of population now in our schools where we're trying to do the best we have with what we have, but we really aren't equipped to give these kids what they need? And I, and, you know, what they need, and then because we're not able to give them what they need, they're impacting the other students by being in the classroom. So, you know, it's, do we keep building up what we're doing by bringing in people who can offer these services, or at some point, do we say, these are students that need and deserve to be elsewhere where they can get the greatest amount of help from people who can give them the kind of help that they need?
Right. So the challenge is, the state has a cap. I don't understand how they develop the cap. You know, we know the needs of our students, but the state has a cap on how many students we can have in what's called, what we call out-of-district placement. The state does participate in out-of-district placement. I don't know if we have special ed here, maybe Dr. Pugh could chime in here if I need, if I say something wrong, please correct me. For most of our out-of-district placements, after a certain period of time, the state will pay 2/3 of the cost for that out-of-district placement. So we have out-of-district placements where one student might cost $100,000. The state will pay 2/3 of that, we have to pay 1/3 of that. We pay, I think it's several million dollars in out-of-district placement, maybe as much as $3 million or $4 million. Don't quote me on that number. But we have a percentage of students that were capped, so I, the last I checked, we were within eight students of our cap. No, it's been eight students, yes. So you have this ebb and flow of students coming in and out of various out-of-district placements. We can't, we have to solve the problem within our own capability right now, is what I understand.
My question then would be...
Is there a number you guys can provide? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
...for out-of-district placements.
So, we have, we are paying $4 million.
Okay.
I want to say for about 180 kids, 160 kids.
So... So, what I'm hearing is this is not a situation unique to Washington County.
Absolutely.
So, is it unrealistic to think that pressure needs to be put on the state to say, this is something that we are dealing with statewide, the cap needs to be raised and you need to find the funds to give us to be able to make sure that these kids are getting what they want and that we need to advocate for that? I put it out there and...
I don't know. I mean, we're looking at Kerwin and somewhere buried in all the Kerwin language, it's obviously not in the bill and it was in the recommendation, in the original note, but it described special education needs being reduced by half. That's partially how they're paying for Kerwin. So, we're almost gone the other way where we're saying, we have $4 million invested in, I know it's less than 200 children. I don't know the exact number, but we have $4 million invested in two, less than 200 children. You know, it would be another 4 million if it's another 200 children that we need in placement. The greater challenge I have, we do serve a lot of our children in our summit programs and some of these classes better than they're getting out of some of these high costs out of district placements. Some of the places do a great job. Some of them I don't think are, have the capability that we have. So, we've just got to find that balance of protecting children, protecting the educational environment of all children, all children, and meeting the needs of all children. And it's a tough one. So, we're just trying to find that balance. What we proposed in that one slide for 1.6, 1.7 million, we'll start seven new programs that will accommodate students. So, that was the seven teachers and the 15 pair pros and social workers. That'll start, that'll start additional programs to support students.
So, those programs will be located in various schools and how will those programs impact those schools with the kinds of students, with the kinds of needs that we're talking about, what will be the impact? I mean, I want to be a strong advocate for all students, for those who are in need of very special services and for those who are being impacted by having those neediest and most fragile of kids in with them. And I just, I know that by putting a program like that into a school, it changes the school considerably.
It can tax the school or it can be used as a real resource. I mean, when I'm out in schools and I, you know, I try to spend four or five days a week out at schools the best I can. Today, I was here early and I left about 10 of 7 and I just walked back in here like at 1:25 from being in schools today. But I was at a school yesterday where they were describing success of two young men pushed out into classrooms or out almost all day long. They do have bad days and they had to go back into their summit room with their teacher, but the principal's just saying how successful it was to have this program there for those students. I don't think it's going to be long before we'll have to open an equivalent of an Antietam Academy, possibly at Funkstown. Again, until we see how we're going to turn the corner, the best I can describe it of things that children can't control, you know, alcohol syndrome, the opioid addiction, the children experiencing at birth, the trauma that's going on, which, you know, the last couple of weeks, we just hear just tragic, tragic stories. So, I think we're doing a great job with many of our students and I just think we're going to have to have various levels of services. The out-of-district placement is one level that we hesitate to put children in, but we're pretty much up against that cap. We're having success with many of our students. We are having many students that are wearing us out. And I think additional resources and targeted resources at the right schools, with the right staff, with the right training, we can meet the needs of many more students, but that, the need is probably going to continue to grow until we see it curb some other direction.
Thank you, Dr. Michael.
I think Stan had his hand up first.
Go ahead, Jackie.
I was just wondering if this issue is something we should add to our legislative list of priorities, just to start to work with our delegations, start to get ideas out there, not necessarily looking at this point for any solution because as Dr. Michael has said, we don't know right now what is the best solution. But maybe it's time that we start sharing these ideas and checking also with other LEAs, find the ones that are having same problems we are. Maybe we can work some things out together, especially with our mutual delegations.
We're not, we're not alone. I had an email request from one of the superintendents, it's probably been maybe three weeks ago or so, asking, are you filling out, what paperwork are you filling out when you need to clear the room for a student that's, you know, being disruptive? And, you know, I responded, we generally complete all the appropriate paperwork each time that happens, but it's happening everywhere, some places to a greater extent than others. But again, I don't want to get negative on this, our staff is doing an amazing job, the patience they have, the support they're giving the children that have these challenges. We just couldn't ask for more compassionate group and they're working hard to educate these children, which is really important.
Mr. Victor.
Adding on to what Jackie said about making it part of our legislative priorities, I think it also will call attention to the fact that the opioid crisis has impacted, had a major impact on education.
Absolutely.
And as, we know it's a matter of time before settlement money starts to be a reality. We don't know how much, but certain drug companies have already started settling and other cases are in process. So, obviously, when that money comes in, if the powers that be are aware of what a challenge it's been for our school systems, hopefully, that might be another avenue to get some funding from, from the actual people that helped cause this problem.
Mr. Stowe.
I just want to ask a few questions here to, so it's, this is clear in my mind. Are all the students at Funkstown from Pangborn?
No. So, we have three classes that are traditional pre-K classes. They were designed to be, because Pangborn didn't have room at its school, so they do have two programs at Funkstown. We started these three programs, excuse me. Pangborn has two programs at Pangborn. Pangborn has three programs at Funkstown. However, only 38 of those children in the three programs are Pangborn students right now. So, what we've done is we've allowed some overflow from some other schools to come in to Funkstown. I don't know the makeup of the other children beyond the 38 or the total for the three programs. It should be somewhere between 50 and 60 students in total. One of the other places we're challenged with space is DALB. I would like to see there, they have one pre-K, great pre-K program, but they have a need for additional student space there. So, we're going to work on how we can accommodate additional students there. I suspect some of the students at Funkstown are DALB students as well. In addition to those three programs, there's one, I don't know what the title of it is, Janice here, but Gifted and Talented Program, I'm sorry, I, yeah, like accelerated pre-K. I mean, these are kids that are already reading and things like that, so what's happening with that class is just amazing, just amazing, because we're taking them from where they already are and they test into that program. Sometimes they jump all the way into kindergarten, but some of them are just too young to be in kindergarten, they're going to be in school a year earlier than what they really need to be. But the teacher there does an amazing job with them. So, that group's made up of students from all over the county. My goal with that program, I just don't want to be premature in announcing the idea of where we're...
There's 38, I think you said?
Mm-hmm.
Students back, that's almost two classes, right?
Right.
I'm saying. So, that's going to displace students, older students in Pangborn. We're going to put portables there. I mean, I can see people saying, you got people in portables, which we all detest or dislike, I'll use that way, because of the safety factor, and yet, we could have them. And I realize all the ramifications that you've gone through in a perfectly, pretty good brick building at Funkstown. Instead, we're going to put them out in portables. I can see some pushback from that.
I could, but I think, to me, as I've worked with staff, the children can be better served. Right now, to ride a bus as a pre-K child, four years old, so you're getting on a bus, you ride to Pangborn, we load you back up on another bus. After all the buses arrive, we get you on the bus and we take you over to Funkstown, we get you off the bus, you know, you've got a couple of naps in there, you've got lunch in there, and then we end the day early, get you back on a bus, get you back over to Pangborn. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of other things going on here. We've survived portable, I don't like portables, I'm anti-portable, I've worked hard to get rid of portables, our facility staff knows that. We're also not going to waste a resource of our portables and we need to utilize them well. So, but the Pangborn piece is only a small piece of what's happening there. Again, we're resourcing this place with a full-time principal, coordinator, secretary, head custodian, and we're talking about a building that has, you know, less than 100 children in it.
What about Funkstown if it is closed, mothballing it for a year? What are going to be the cost of keeping that? I mean vandalism, I mean, could be a factor.
If our camera system remained up and, up and running, we made no estimates in our cost reduction for heating, cooling, lighting, any of that type of thing. So, we would go to what's required to maintain it without, you know, we don't want mold to start, we don't want anything like that to start. I think it could be good to close, even if we could open it up next year as a therapeutic school, it'd be good to have a year to get reorganized and, because you'd still, the staff members that are there now are not likely the staff that would be there if it was a therapeutic school. So, even if we made that change right now, I think we'd be changing out a lot of staff and things, so.
Mrs. Murray?
I've got a whole bunch of questions because they're all over the place. I was a little bit upset when I heard about closing Funkstown, but after I heard you explain about those Pangborn students, if I was a parent of a Pangborn pre-K student, I would gladly welcome them back to the school. That is a lot for a little four-year-old to go on a bus and then have to get on another bus and then, you know, the transition back and forth. So, I agree with that. I think that's a good move. None of us like portables, obviously, but if that's the way we're going to make the room, then that's what we have to do right now. I just wanted to ask you, is there a cap on how many pre-K students you can have in one classroom? Is it 20?
The state recommends for our Excel's program, the state looks at that and they ideally want the staffing ratio to be 1 to 10. So, it'd be 20, teacher and an IA is the ideal that they're looking for. So, we wouldn't get an Excel's five rating if we had 20, if we had more than 20. But we do have a couple of classrooms that are a couple over 20, like why would we deny one child a service, you know, when we have 21, if things are going well, we have an IA in the room? So, but that's our target is 20, a teacher and an IA. We do have classes of 10 that only have a teacher and I think that's sometimes better and particularly our Title I schools and certainly better than no program at all and not have those 10 students be served.
How about summit? Do we have summit programs for our younger students, younger than kindergarten?
That's what this TTP program would be at Funkstown right now. That would be serving pre-K students and we have three or four kids in there.
And what we do have summit programs in a school for K through...
K to 2, 3 to 5.
And how many do we have for K to 2?
Uh, no, we have, you know, that started out with zero, not too many years ago, and we added one and then we added two and now we have quite a few of them. Rockland has at least two programs, if not three. Jonathan Hager has a couple of programs. There's more than that. I'm sorry, I don't have that information right here with me.
Would they be the students that might go to the therapeutic school?
Could be. Now, again, what we're seeing, we've kind of mixed that up a couple of different times. I know at Rockland, we tried to look at tiering the kids in the, almost three different levels, kids that are pushed out regularly, kids that are pushed out part of the time, kids that aren't pushed out at all. And we'd have hopes that the kids that aren't pushed out at all would get pushed out someday. What I would see in a therapeutic school was, and again, we're ahead of ourselves again, but we're trying to service more kids in the schools they have, have children in some specialized programs that right now are currently full-time in regular classrooms. So, we're trying to serve more children this way, join that through our Title I schools where we have the greatest need and be able to serve those students in their schools, freeing up space out of Rockland Woods. If there's Title I students there, they move back to these new programs. That would free up space for other students to attend at Rockland Woods. The therapeutic school I would see would be for the more severe cases, cases that we normally would recommend, as Mrs. Williams indicated, why wouldn't it go to out-of-district placement? We'd basically be creating our own, I won't call it out-of-district placement, but out of the normal classroom, out of the normal school setting and provide similar services that those therapeutic settings are providing is what I envision down the road here.
And I agree with that.
And it's probably not very far away.
I would support that 100%.
Mr. Reidenar?
Yeah, real quickly, because I've got to pick up, how many of the kids in the out-of-county placement are elementary or...
I don't know the split on that, but it's, it's a significant number of them are elementary.
And how many of them probably have no chance of coming back?
There are students that I think we've almost never seen and there are students that do come and go. We'll, we'll try to provide, I'll send home something in the Friday updates with the exact number of students that we have. We'll break it down by elementary, middle, high. Many of them are special needs students, so they could be in school till they're 21.
Be more Marshall Street though, wouldn't they?
Marshall Street more if, I mean, if we can, you know, it's another setting that we have for, for students of various needs. And some of our out-of-district placements are just things that are beyond Marshall Street's capability too.
What I'm thinking, and again, you guys have got to come up with, because I can't do the math in my head, you know, if some of those kids, we're going to have a certain number that we can't bring back. There's a certain number we would bring back at some point, you know? So, how much money would we save if they're here all the time? Those kids that would, that go from one to the other, how much money would we save if...
Mr. Reidenar, you've been here long enough to know that Dr. Gladhill developed a number of our summit programs to help save us money. It saved a substantial amount of money and for a while, we were able to reduce that number that we're getting up close to the cap. There was a point, it's been a good while ago, but it's been since I've been in the central office, where we exceeded the cap and we actually got penalized and we had to return money to the state. It seemed like it was in the several hundred thousand dollar range.
Right.
But Dr. Gladhill developed, that's how this whole summit program got started and we pulled back a lot of students. We better serve them with an education and saved a tremendous amount of money when we did that. What's happened unfortunately is those programs have kind of filled back up, our needs have increased.
That's kind of my, my thought process with what, what we're speaking to as a therapeutic school. Okay, if we're spending $4 million a year down there, can we do that here for, I mean, obviously, there's still going to be $2 to $3 million probably down there. Can we do it for $1 million up here in a specific area, one school or whatever the case may be? Just a thought.
Yeah.
And, you know, just a thought, food for thought for you guys.
I think it would provide an opportunity for some kids to come back. Unfortunately, until we see this trend stop growing, I think we're, we're heading for more needs that we're going to have to serve right now.
But it is having, you know, it's having a desperately bad impact on, on, you know, our teachers. That's stressful.
Absolutely.
I mean, I get stressed coming here. I cannot imagine what they go through.
I thank our teachers every day when I see them and the things they, they deal with, they're amazing. And their IAs as well, bus drivers, just a lot of people are involved.
Mr. Kessler, you?
Yes, I'm looking here and I maybe overlooked, is any resource officers being added this year?
Resource officers, we had budgeted, we're working with the sheriff's department right now. I think their grant was approved.
I believe so.
And they're working on getting two resource officers through the process. It takes about a year, so we will pick up two additional resource officers. I think we've described before how we would use those resource officers in the county if indeed they get through the process. What we're going to use the budgeted money in the resource line right now in Mr. Galy's budget is we need to try to start providing additional services for more of our nighttime activities, some of our larger events. Talked a little bit to the principals about their, you know, they're interested in possibly raising gate prices to help cover for additional security measures that they have. Right now, I'm hoping that we can help the schools out with that without raising gate prices because I think it's already $5 and a lot of our families would, might be denied the opportunity to see their child play if we just continue to up that. So, as far as additional people, the next two resource officers we hope to pick up are going to be through the grant. The grant requires the county to pick them up long-term. You know, my goal is to shift the resource officers to the county expenses and that's where the majority of the counties are paid for. And I think that would be a great, great... are paid for, and I think that would be a great, great way for the county to support us.
Think about Canada's additional follow-up too, that grant is through the Center for School Safety with the state, and that is a recurring grant, so we should be able to grow the ranks of the SRO program through the grant from the Center for School Safety, without having to add it in our own budgets.
That's good, that's good. Did I understand you say earlier on that at one time, we had all the EL students together and populated together, like in one school?
Not necessarily populated in one school, but they seem to be more concentrated, first of all, seemed like they were older students initially, students that came here more middle school and high school, or a lot of our EL population, a lot of the students were at North or South High, Williamsport. Now, a lot of our students are younger students, you know, kind of the whole range, elementary, middle and high, and they've scattered out across the entire county. We do have our welcome center at Pangborn, so all of our students come through there initially. It's been very helpful to the families to help get the students registered and get them enrolled in school and things like that. We do kind of still combine some resources when it makes sense, but we are trying to serve students the best we can across the county and where they live. Much like a special ed child, our goal is to, as much as possible, serve them in the environment in, in their home district.
So, what is the cost of that service and with it being spread out at different schools compared if it was brought into one school and you would concentrate the majority together, and then maybe as a time when you get to high school and then they would go back into their communities?
Well, I don't know if I could give you a cost, we'd have to think about the fairness to the student and the parents. We do do some of that, and, you know, if we have like one child in Hancock, they'll probably get services a couple of days a week, they don't have somebody there full-time. So, all of our people are serving multiple schools for the most part, a couple of our schools. Hickory I think has at least one full-time EL teacher there, a fairly small school, I think they're 10, 11, 12% of their school, like 38 kids, 40 kids are EL students, just in that two-round school of Hickory. So there's, you know, a lot of families live together and have, you know, have family and friends, and they kind of, I guess, find each other and are kind of, you know, there in that one school district. We're seeing tremendous success with our pre-K program, we'll share a little bit of that with the board of students that traditionally would be identified. I think there's three factors that identify you to be tested for EL, and most of these students were identified in at least two areas, and when we tested them, they did not need EL services as a result of being in pre-K. So being young and absorbing the language and being in our pre-K program, I think is going to help us with our youngest students long-term as far as entering EL services. We do have children that move here that have not had formal education at all, and they're not only behind in learning the English language, they're behind in their studies to begin with, so that's challenging.
Would there be any advantage to having them in one centrally-located?
I think economically, there could be some advantage, we'd have a lot of transportation costs that we might lose from trying to pull everybody together, but where we see the greatest growth is where the students are participating with other students of the English language. And we have, I think we're over 40-some different languages right now, so it's not like we're pulling everybody together just to learn Spanish or, you know, working with them in Spanish, they already have the challenge of, I think it's 40 couple of different languages at this point.
I do have a few more questions, Mr. Stauffer wants to go and come back to me.
I just want to ask one question, if I may, on page two of 41, it's the summary of unrestricted expenditures. When I was going over the budget at home, I just saw that, just curious, special ed programs and WCPS, I'm not just sure what that includes in terms of naming that, but it shows a decrease, I was just curious, with all the emphasis put on special ed, there's a, it shows a decrease in expenditures for 2021?
It's going to be rightsizing something, I'll defer to Eric or David to be sure.
The main, it's not, it's not a reduction of services, the first thing we do when we build the budget is we're looking at the current teacher or the current staff, incumbent staff, and we're just adjusting. So if you look back at page 17.
That's the detail.
And then about the middle of the page, if you look, when we total the salaries and wages, 207,000 is just, is associated with just adjusting the salaries to the incumbents. So that, that's the bulk of it, and then we're moving some to some other special ed departments as well.
I knew it wasn't a reduction in services, but if someone from the outside were to see that, they'd go, oh, 200 and some thousand dollars less and so forth, but just curious, thank you, Mr. Gessford.
What is the cost of moving portables? If we would move?
I don't know if you remember the last, we've moved portables almost every year.
We moved three from two different locations this past summer to Salem Avenue for the expansion of the pre-K program there. That was several hundred thousand dollars, I want to say, I want to say it was almost a hundred thousand dollars a portable. We moved two from Eastern Elementary, one from Sharpsburg, and also dismantled one at Sharpsburg that was beyond life. So, in essence, it was four portables, but three of them got moved and one was dismantled.
And what would the cost of mothballing a school cost? I mean, we typically haven't done that for a long time, but what's, what's that going to run us?
Again, we haven't, we haven't identified savings for, so we could run, you know, full heat, full cooling, you know, lock the doors, keep the security going, we didn't identify savings on any of that at this point, so I don't think there'll be a substantial cost to, to quote mothballing the building, especially if it's only mothball for a year. So boards aware, we had JDC probably for 20 years, you know, because it wasn't conditioned, it slowly deteriorated over time. What other building did we have? Kind of could Jake Winters Street, we turn them right over to the county, which was the best thing to do, seemed like there was too, but, I mean, we've mothballed a substantial part of Cascade, I was at Cascade today, we have seven rooms that are technically used for classrooms, and then a bunch of rooms that, because they have the space, you know, this is where I teach this subject and this is where I teach that subject, some teachers have two or three rooms, I'll say two rooms maybe, and then we have art that shows up there, they have a room, but they're only there one day a week, and music has a room, but they're there one day a week, and...
PTA has a full classroom?
Yeah, PTA has a full classroom, and then we have a whole wing of that building, the old part towards the, the road, that's, it's, it's mothballed and emptied for, since the fort closed, so.
And then, then what did you say the savings would be for us if we do close?
It's over 300,000 because we're going to pick up coordinator, principal position, we're going to pick up a full-time secretary position, we're going to pick up a head custodians, two custodians.
And even, and the utility cost at Funkstown is only about 36,000 a year for all utilities, it's actually a fairly efficient building. So, when you think about, you know, the cost to keep it full-running, it's 36,000, we left all that expense in the budget, but if you, let's say, set everything to nighttime setback, you know, let's say set the, the temperature, let's say to 60 degrees in the wintertime, maybe you leave it at, you know, 80 in the summertime for cooling, you know, you're going to save a little bit of cost, you'll save some, some water expenses, sewer expenses, but, you know, it might only, it might only cost 15 to 20,000 to run, just as, in a, in a, what I'll call a dormant state, to just maintain the building.
But, you know, we run mail service there every other day, we have food service that drives there every day, food service staff that would be there, they probably just get relocated in another position. You know, as you use the building, you have maintenance costs, things like that, things will be needed, things like that.
How many rounds of school was that at one time?
I don't, I guess it was only ever designed as a one-round school. It only has like six or seven classrooms total in the whole building.
And did I understand that we just renovated that last year?
No, we've, we've kept it up, so over time, we've added a roof, over time, we've added HVAC, we did do a vestibule project there, so we have safety and security. So the building's in, in pretty good shape overall, but it's not, you know, fully modernized or anything.
So, is it possible to get all those numbers together to show us? It would be really nice to see what those numbers look like, what the mothballing, what it would cost to have portables brought in for the other schools, just kind of an overall picture so we can take a look at that?
What we're seeing out of this is we'd have a one-time cost of moving portables. You know, again, my goal is, it's just fair to the Pangborn kids that get served in their district, I just can't come up with a long-term solution. Was the reduction in students at Old Forge, is that going to be permanent? If that's permanent, we certainly can look at a redistricting, maybe you take part of Cortland Manor to Old Forge, that would immediately take off 60, 70 kids out of Pangborn, I think one-third of Pangborn, one-third of Cortland goes there, and that would backfill Old Forge, wouldn't cost any additional staff or what's there right now, but that would be a couple-year process. But I think eventually, the challenge we have at Pangborn, our classes are fair-sized already, I think it would continue to be a five-round school, even if we pulled 50, 60, 70 kids out of there. So unless we take it down to a four-round school, where it could completely accommodate four pre-Ks inside the building, I just don't see a near-term solution for that, and I just believe those pre-K children should be there at the school, I think the pre-K staff needs to be working with kindergarten staff. A lot of research that pre-K in the end doesn't work, I want to be a trend bender on that, the way to do that is you have to work with pre-K and kindergarten together, kindergarten's got to feed into first grade, they have to know what each other are doing, they have to believe in their students, and you have to just, you know, continue to work interventions for students that aren't making progress and offer great opportunities for students that are accelerated. And we need to do that, I believe, with the children being together at Pangborn. So I started with that premise, and it's such a hodgepodge of other things there at Funkstown. I know people love this school that completely changes its whole population every year, every year has a whole group of new students, there's, I don't think anybody's retained, I don't think the same children come back, so it's not like we're closing a school that has a district, you know, a long-time history of these children go to this school, it's, that's not the nature of this school at all. This is a good thing for kids if we can get them in their home district. For the special needs children, I believe we can better serve them based on the requests I continue to get for additional staffing and the type of staffing they have, we have those resources at other places, we need to take care of that. The children in the advanced program will excel any place we put them, any place we put them, we just want to make it somewhat convenient to parents the best we can, because parents have to provide their transportation. And the TTP program, we can better utilize that in another school as well, because we're sending kids to Funkstown to be in that program, on a bus, after they've also been on a bus. And if I can get them more located in a school that might already have those children, that'll better serve those children as well. So I don't want to, this, while it's in the budget as a savings, it is clearly a savings, it is not the driving force of what's happening at Pangborn.
So if that's...
Or, excuse me, what's happening at Funkstown?
... turned into a therapeutic school, you'd still have to bus those students?
Absolutely.
And take them out of their, their, their area?
Right. So, that's where we're starting to move into our next best option at that point, would be to develop that school, much like Antietam Academy. My hope would be we didn't need Antietam Academy, Antietam Academy was two grades at one time, it is now seven grades, it's just a change in our population. And many students that middle school and high school would like to send to Antietam Academy are in their home schools because there's no room in Antietam Academy.
Mrs. Murray?
I have one more question about the budget, and if this was answered, I apologize. It's about substitutes. I'm not sure, do we pay substitutes sick leave? Are we currently doing that?
As required by the law.
Okay, I thought, I mean, I thought that law was passed, and where is it reflected in the budget?
It's just within the substitute line item, it's not, you can't pick it out per se.
Okay, and what page is that?
We have, we have substitutes throughout the budget, but the main category would be in the classroom instruction on page eight. Line 40, it's about, about halfway down the page, we're budgeting just over 2 million for substitutes.
If you look all the way out there on the right-hand side, all those items are numbered, so that makes it a little bit easier to find them, or it does for me at least.
Thank you.
But that would just be for a substitute who's covering a teacher or an IA who is charged to this section, like we have it in special ed, we have substitutes and so forth.
Substitutes in EL, substitutes in CT, so each section is, gets broken out for, for their classification.
Okay, all right, thank you.
David or Eric, and it's our question for me, I think Mrs. Fisher asked about postage at one point, and why 85,000 was, was in operations, and certainly operation maintenance doesn't use 85,000 for the postage, can you answer that question?
Yeah, that's a, that's a financial reporting manual issue, that the postage and distribution is supposed to be included in operation of plant?
Okay. Whether it makes sense or not, that's where the, that's where the state manual says that's where it's supposed to be identified.
Fisher, you have another question?
Well, I have a question that, that kind of goes along with the substitutes. We have the perfect attendance incentive for teachers, and I realize that one of the goals there is to make sure teachers are with students, not just substitutes. But I'm wondering if there's any way to figure out if there is an actual savings in money with this program? Because, I mean, we're paying them extra money if they meet certain criteria, would it, is that less of a cost than putting a substitute in there, or?
It's more of a cost than putting a substitute in there, because the average teacher in Washington County makes, what do we say, three?
300 and some dollars a day.
344 dollars a day, so if you trade in a day, we're going to pay you 344 dollars for the day you trade in, it would have cost, you know, 110 dollars to have a substitute in the room. What we're hoping is the incentive has people have perfect attendance, and maybe they would have missed two or three days, and we might offset it that way, but my goal again is about instruction. We want the teacher in the classroom, we don't want the substitute in the classroom, certainly what we're trying to work on. We'll, we'll work on all of our numbers, we were up with teachers with perfect attendance, I think about 440 took advantage of cash-in days, I think we had about 600 teachers with perfect attendance. We'll try to provide, you know, each quarter as we go through that process, so I'm hoping at the end of the year that we have, we might not have people that have perfect attendance year-long, but I'm hoping overall, we're going to have a substantial increase in that. You know, we debated that for years and years, do we pay people extra, actually to come to work, to do the work that they're supposed to come and do? But I feel like we're punishing the people who are there every day when they need to cover classes and things like that, so this is a, at least one token of something that gives them an option, whether they want to let their sick leave roll over, whether they want their sick leave there when they retire, whether they want to cash out sick leave if they happen to be healthy or have circumstances that they can have perfect attendance for marking period, so. Yeah, it wasn't done as a cost-saving measure, it's done as a destructional measure to try to have people in the classrooms all of the day possible can be.
Mr. Gessford?
On page two of four, could you go over, give me a little bit more information on section B, two, three and four, technology projector replacement, technology staff MacBook replacements and the cybersecurity software, could you give me a little bit more details on those three items?
On the summary page?
On the summary.
Oh, yeah, summary page.
So I think, Mr. Gessford, on the, on the projector replacement or the MacBook replacement, this is probably, what I'll say is dipping our toe in the water, I mean, we've got, you know, projectors, I can think back to the schools that were open, the three elementaries that were open my first year here, which is now almost 12 years ago, Rockland, Pangborn and Morgansville, the original projectors are still in those ceilings. So, over time, those projectors wear out and they've got to be replaced, and currently, you know, schools try to do some piecemeal replacement as they have funds available out of their allocations, and we're looking to create a space inside the technology line item to handle those types of replacements on a more systemic basis, as opposed to asking the school principals to save and hold money out of allocation, which is for other instruction and other services for students to, to take care of those replacements. Additionally, when the district, when the digital learning plan was, was put into place, the teacher MacBooks were all purchased, and that's coming up on six years ago if my memory is about right. So, those MacBooks are nearing time to be replaced, and this starts establishing a line item for those to be cycled on about a five or six-year replacement cycle.
So that would be projectors?
Projectors in the classroom.
Okay, not just one projector?
Correct.
I was like, that's an awful lot for one projector.
Nope, and that, and at that number, it's probably a six or seven or eight-year cycle system-wide, off the top of my head, I think.
Yeah, the cycles are around a seven... Yeah, the cycles are around a seven-year cycle and this only represented about 50% of the number we need to get to that seven-year
It could even be as, you know, higher, like a 12-year replacement.
I think that's kind of What kind of projectors you're referring to?
Standard LCD projector mounted in the classroom, so a teacher's computer is connected to that, so they're projecting instructional material onto the board for the students. At one time, they were, you know, on carts or they were overhead slides or what have you. You know, for safety, for, to eliminate trip hazards, we're trying to get as many as we can mounted into the ceiling and, and they have a shelf life.
There isn't a way they can just do that with the computers they've got with the teacher sending it to the individual computers rather than using the?
Well, the other way we do is through Apple TV where, you know, their computer's hooked up to the Apple TV, but that still requires a monitor that eventually has to be replaced. So, it's just different, different ways that we're using to project information in the classroom.
And that would be something that, you know, for, I mean, I would think from a board standpoint, when you say you are putting that as a line item because we're going to be having this every year, it would, for me, it would be very helpful to know that I've got to purchase 20 over the next five years and this is the first six, so that I can kind of think, okay, now I know where the direction that we're going. That kind of helps instead of just saying projector. And when people hear this over, you know, in the public and are going like, you're buying projectors? Well, you just bought projectors. Well, it's because we have to buy 20 or 30 to cover this many and this isn't a
This line item will buy more than that, Bob. What is a projector roughly right now?
About $700.
Okay. So, that's just like, so the MacBook are for staff and that's going to be another line item because you're going to be purchasing for all the staff and that would be $2,300?
Probably about that, I believe. Is that over?
About $2,300. You replace all, it's like 1.45 million, you replace them all at one time.
Okay, okay.
So, so you got about one-tenth of that here in the budget?
Right. And so, the cybersecurity software, what, what type of, what do we have now that's, that's not working that we are upgrading that? Is that an ongoing process?
Yeah, I'll probably ask Bob to come up and use the microphone. But, you know, we hired a cybersecurity person as a result of the audit. They recommended five positions. We added three last year. We didn't recommend any additional positions this year, again, because of current costs. The individual, this is TJ, one of the TJ's. We have two TJ's.
TJ Forside.
But he's looked at our needs. He's current on cybersecurity needs and look where we're most vulnerable and this is what he's recommending. But I'll give Bob the expert here.
So, there are three different pieces of software that allow us to do scanning, external scans, scans of all our endpoints to make sure they're current with antivirus software, malware, protect us against phishing. So, there are three different pieces that all go together. The one piece of software gives him a single pane of glass to consolidate logs from different servers and access points that we have so that he can see if any vulnerabilities are happening, he can catch them real-time. So, it just gives him one pane of glass through the one piece of software to look at that.
Is that something that we could, we'd be okay to not have it in this budget cycle and if we are looking for things, or is it something that we just have got to have?
This is something that we should have. When you look around other districts, some of them have cybersecurity people and when they do, they have the necessary software and tools for them to do the job that it's supposed, the way it's supposed to be done.
So, right now, we don't?
We have two, two of the pieces of software right now. We're looking at purchasing the third, but this is an ongoing licensed software every year, so these are yearly costs.
Okay. Any other questions? No?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I do have one thing. On number 21, it says, safety, security, school resource officer turnover credit. And it, did we talk about that, why that is listed as a turnover credit of $100,000?
So, we've had, just like we have turnover credit, the county has turnover credit. We actually have had two SROs, one already retired this year, one planning to retire. So, we pay actual, we pay actual cost.
So, I didn't know we had somebody retire.
We'll reflect the savings there.
Okay.
So, when they get a new officer in, it costs a lot less. We, we get that benefit.
Yeah, understood that, but I just wasn't sure that we, I didn't know we had two people leave or retiring. Okay, that's all. Thanks.
So, I think, I'm not sure what our budget counter calls for next, but I think we have another work session in January. Obviously, we're anxious to get to the January 17th meeting. We have a joint meeting coming up with the county commissioners. All that kind of comes in there pretty tight, but we'll keep track of what's going on. Let's hope we get more money from the state. Obviously, this budget doesn't account for, I mean, it does account for a reasonable benefits and salary and things for employee groups, but I don't know if that's where we'll land. And this budget, I do need to emphasize, would require, right now, if our state number's correct, $2 million additional from the county beyond low effort and beyond the 38 students that were required by law to pay for. I don't know when the last time it was we saw $2 million additional from the county. And if Eric or David can remember, can't remember that far back.
Over 10 years.
But to balance this budget, that's what it would require. So, and we've gone through a lot of work with staff. We had a budget of needs of probably five or six million beyond this budget that we cut back to get to this. So, this is not a budget that's full of bells and whistles and extras and want to, want to have kind of things. This is a, this is a budget of needs that we have. So, cross our fingers that we get more state money. Kerwin money, I don't see coming this year, but I was surprised when we got the blueprint money last year. So, now, everybody's counting on a big windfall from Kerwin, but Kerwin kicks in in '21, assuming laws pass and assume budgets and money supplied and all those things come together. I'm sorry, '22. So, thank you, staff. Always get it mixed up, but it won't be July of '20 that the new Kerwin money comes. We're counting on blueprint money is what I understood is going to come through for July. And we've kind of allowed for that money for this year, except for that, I think it's 57 million that I don't understand and we don't know about the, what's going to happen here with the pre-K grant money. So, a lot, a lot of things to happen here. You got a lot of moving parts. So, we'll know more January 17th or sooner, I hope.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Michael.
Thank you.